All right, this is the Housing Committee meeting. Today is Monday, May 8, 2017, and we have five different items on the agenda. Once we get, once we join by.
Now we're on.
So we have five different items on the agenda. We're gonna start with item sixty-eight oh nine. This is a disposition of three fifty-four Park Street. And Liza from the assets office is here tonight with us. Good evening, how you doing?
So the document number sixty-eight dash oh nine, it's a city-owned vacant land at three fifty-four, that's three fifty-eight Park Street, with four thousand square feet. The assessed value is five thousand four hundred dollars. This is a direct disposition to the abater for the assessed value of fifty-four hundred dollars. The city has owned this for approximately eleven years. And there's some information attached. Our proposal is to sell it with, they need to submit an approval not required form, a subdivision plan, merge in the, this lot with the lot that they own at thirteen Wells Street. They also need to submit landscape plan, storm man, water management plan. And if you look at the plan submitted by the abater, this is to be used as access way and parking for some buildings that they like to build, two twenty-four unit apartment buildings with seventy-two parking spaces.
I can see here on the, on the conditions that you don't have that section that says only access or?
So it's part, it's parking area, they're gonna have some green space area there as well.
So on the conditions, we have that specified that is gonna be used for access to the property?
It says that it must be utilized for parking area and green space and no construction will be allowed.
Oh, I saw that number six, condition number six is gonna allow them to do the, like, some type of driveway? Okay, I just wanna make sure because I mean, it doesn't.
Yes.
There's any construction allowed, so the driveway is gonna, it's gonna be actually a construction. So that's gonna be allowed, a driveway?
Yes.
Can we add that to the number six?
Parking, driveway, and green space. They did a lot, the lot that they purchased behind, the city-owned lot, has been used for illegal dumping for many years. They've done a lot of cleanup in that area, so it'd be nice to, to see that, a little development there.
So essentially, what we're gonna do here, we have two, two different buildings, it's gonna be twenty-four unit each?
Yeah, so it's twenty-four units each with one and two unit apartments. There's gonna be seventy-two parking spaces, which will comply with zoning. This, they've done a lot of work, I can bring Mr. Avalto Nunez to speak regarding the project. But the project, it's very large compared to the small portion, we're only selling them four thousand square feet on Park Street. They, that green area that you see on Park Street, it's owned by them already, they, their lot goes to Park Street. So they own a little strip next to our lot.
Counselor, there is any question? Sure, Counselor Plant?
Thank you. Will there need to be any kind of zoning approvals after this parcel is sold?
Yeah, they have to actually go through Conservation, they've been working with Mass DEP because this is next to the Speaker River. So they, they started the process with, with everybody. And Mr. Nunez will fill you in on, on all that stuff.
Could you, could somebody fill me in, is it before Mass DEP or before the Conservation Commission?
Both.
Why is it before Mass DEP? I'm only asking because if, if, if I'm convinced it is before Mass DEP, I'm recusing myself from the vote.
So it's in front of DEP or in front of, you guys are dealing with DEP or we got, you guys are dealing with the Conservation Department?
We're dealing, we're dealing with Conservation, but we had to do the process with DEP first before we presented to Conservation.
Okay, so my question to you is, are you currently into the deep, I'm sorry, into the deeper process or not? You haven't get to that point yet? Have you presented this project to DEP?
We did the environmental study, but we had to get the DEP number to present it to Conservation.
Sure, so you're not really working with Mass DEP, you got a notice of intent, you have a wetlands file number, that's all, that's all, that's just normal course of business.
It's correct. And we here because I can't, you know, I can't present this package to Conservation or, or zoning without me on the parcel online. Because I should on the parcel line first before I, I present it to Conservation.
So you already have your, you already have your Mass, your file, your wetlands file number? You already have your wetlands file number?
That's what we're working right now with the, the guy from here, he doing all the professional work, he do all the planning, everything.
So he did the application for, you're just waiting for a number?
That's what we're doing right now.
So then you could have the number and then bring it before the Conservation Commission? So you don't, so you're at the very early stages of this process with respect to the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I can stay in the game, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, no problem. So essentially, why we, we asking the questions because I mean, if you guys are dealing with DEP, he won't be able to stay. Counselor, there is any other questions?
Actually, yeah. So you're saying, does it have to go before the zoning board of appeals? I'm sure, what was the, I'm not sure answer to the answer.
It, it does go in front of the zoning board.
Why is it going before the zoning board?
I don't, I'm not too familiar with that. My, my job right now is just that, that portion of selling the four thousand square feet.
Is it, Mr. Nunez, thank you for coming up, can you tell me why this property, and there's a reason why I'm asking this, I'm just asking, I'm curious, I'm asking, it, it is important for my vote. Is, is this a conforming property? Clearly it's not, in what ways a non-conforming that you need to go before the ZBA?
I don't, I don't, I don't get the question, excuse me.
Ms. Anon mentioned that this, this property will need to go before the zoning board of appeals, the ZBA?
I have to go to zoning?
I don't know, I'm asking that, I'm asking the question. Ms. Anon seems to believe that it must go before the ZBA, I'm trying to find out why it needs to go before the ZBA. Do you know, is she correct, maybe she's not correct, maybe you don't need to go to the ZBA?
I might not be correct, I was, I was told that he would have to go in front of the zoning board. But I'm not a part of, of that board, so I'm not sure if he does. But before Tuesday, I can let you know if he does.
And I'll be very frank with you, not that I never have been, but I will continue to be candid, which is, which is, you, Mr. Nunez does own, I mean, the bulk of this property. And after he gets the certain orders of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and he meets their requirements, whatever those are going to be, or conditions. I'm just curious if he's by right allowed to build four, two twenty-four unit building, two twenty-four unit buildings? And, and I, I'm just curious as to if that's in fact the case. We don't have any answer.
Mr. Plant, what I, what I can tell you is that, that we are early in this process. And we try to present relocated two buildings, we might need a sit back approval from zoning. And we, that's what we try to do to present it to Conservation. With Conservation, that would be the only property we'd be working above the hundred-foot buffer from the river. But we try to work with a conservation person to, you know, to try to do it the best, everybody be the more happy we can in this project. And that's, that's where we are right now. As soon we move in with this process forward, and then we'll find out if we need, you know, if we need a promo for zoning, we need, we need whatever we need. Whatever process we have to do, then, you know, we follow those processes.
So, so here's, so let me just give you my boulder play comments regarding, regarding units in our city. I'll be brief, and it has nothing to do with you specifically, it's, I've come to the point in my time as a city councillor that I need to start looking at things from a much bigger perspective. Not that I was narrow before, but it's, things are starting to really strike me. Traffic in our city has become to really strike me. The conditions of our schools and the number of students that are in our schools, and now the amount of money we're gonna need to pay to impact, create bigger schools, get more teachers. These have a significant cost to our community, as well as parking, I see a lot of parking on here. So this may not all be attributable to your particular case here, but I, but I've come to the realization that we, we don't need, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the amount of more housing units that are being created in our city because of the impacts that they're having on other things that, that we may not be thinking about completely. So, now the vote before meets this evening, before us this evening, is whether or not to sell this little property here of five thousand square feet to access wave. It's, you know, it's not a lot, it's, it's a very minor portion of it. I've, I've started making myself available to the zoning board, if things are before the zoning board that are looking for creating more units, more so than what we can permit. I've been starting to speak out against that at the zoning board because I'm, I'm starting to feel that strongly about, about how we have impacts in our city. Now, this case right here, as I look, I look at each one of them differently, but that's just the, my thinking. This right here is merely an opportunity to purchase greater, another piece of land. What I'm going to do tonight, Mr. Chairman, is I'm gonna make a motion to send this up without a recommendation, so at least we're not delaying the process, we can set up to the full council, so there's no delay. So we can have a discussion, and maybe we can get more answers at the full council level. I think that's fair to Mr. Nunez, and it's fair, I think, to us, if that's, if you agree with that, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, by all means, you can, you have the right to make the motion, I just wondering, like, this is a property that obviously we, we sell, we are probably selling it to him because he is the owner of, of the, of that, of that lot behind, and, and because of the project that is gonna happen there, if possible, obviously all departmenting, but if we're going to be talking about the project that is going to happen once everything is approved, I don't know if, if they're gonna, if that's going to add to the discussion of this specific item, but you have all the right to make the motion.
So I wanna do that, it's my safe motion, I'm gonna make a motion and we send this up to the full council without a recommendation. That's my motion.
There is a second?
Second discussion?
Discussion, sure. Counselor Tis?
So if I could just have Ms. Nunez talk a little bit, hi, Counselor Tis, hi, how are you? Before we move forward, I think that I would like to hear a little bit more about the units, about the area, I'm very familiar with this area. That's how come I'm, I put it on my cellphone to make sure, this is in Arlington District, right? Yeah, it's in Arlington District, and I, I take that, that right all the time to come on Broadway, it's where I drop off a lot of kids. Tenny Street is insanely.
Tenny Street, White Street?
Yeah, Tenny, so I'm just looking at here on how crowded that area is already, and so I just need a little bit more information, is this a new project that you're doing, or is it a renovation? I know that there's some, some things that are already around there, so just talk to me a little bit more about your project.
I would like to show, I would like to show you a little bit something.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
You can at least see what I, yeah, but I, maybe you know the property, everybody know the property, but yes, yes, quick, I just prepare, yes, this is, this is not a presentation, but I guess, yeah. This is, I do want, this is, you can move it.
Okay, if you can just.
Then you see what it is.
Click on the mic.
You can, you can use, you can use the mic there.
Just pass it over and we.
And we can look through it.
Okay.
So at this.
For the questions that you have.
Yeah, they're different, I think it's, as he's gone through it, so this is the beginning?
Basically, that was the condition of the lot, the beginning, I'm so mindful of trash and stuff.
So if you could talk a little bit about the project while we're looking at the materials that you handed over to us, that'd be great.
Yeah, and that was, that is a piece of land, it's a consistent seventy, a little over seventy thousand square feet of land, that would be, I don't, I don't know if I said, they were taking trash collection for over fifteen or twenty years, and all kind of trash. And we have a lot of problem there, you can see the pictures there, it was, we picked up over a thousand needles in the floor. It was a car, cut in pieces, and three and four pieces buried in the tree, the tree was growing, growing over the trash. TV, tires, engine transmission, and stuff, and, and we be, tried to clean the property, and, and that property, that neighborhood is, is excellent for that type of project that we work on. If we can put two building there with enough parking, we really tried to follow all the process, one by one. And that property used to have a lot of red flag in the past, I understand that too. And it was a nightmare for the whole neighborhood. And then, I, I really, my goal is, improve the quality of housing in the whole area. And we come out, it's a, it's a huge investment, it's a private investment, and that's what I've been doing for over twenty-six or twenty-eight years in the City of Lawrence.
And this is actually around the, the block from, what is that, is it five sixty Arlington, or, it's around, around the, the block?
It's a.
So Park and Broadway, right, when you go on Park Street?
Yes.
You make a.
Right, and Park Street.
Right, if you go on Broadway, then there's also some housing, and there's been, really been a, a renovation in that area, correct?
Yes.
I can't remember, what is it, Arlington Mills or something is over there?
Arlington Mill is in the left side, if you go bro in Park Street, you just make right.
Because Park Street is where Santander is, right?
Yes, it's, it's right, right behind Park Street with the corner with Wells Street.
Wow, that's a lot of needles. You, thank you so much for providing these, these pictures, this is a lot, a lot of cleaning that.
It was a lot of work, it was a lot of work, I'm not even myself, and I clean a lot of property in Lawrence, a lot of property in Lawrence. And I never expect that we will find out, we find three jet ski buried in the, in the, jet ski buried in the tree growth over the trash.
Jet skis?
Yeah, jet skis.
Wow, and these people that are walking here, were they living here or they're helping?
I don't, I, no, I, they was sleeping, they were sleeping there, yeah.
They were sleeping there.
Even the guy, he was doing the, the survey in the property, the site plan, he walked in the first day, he said he, he can't.
Homeless.
Do the work because it was too many needles in the, in the floor, and.
So, so exactly, so the, where you're proposing to do this is on the backside?
Where, where you see all the street there?
Yeah, I can see it now.
Between Broadway, Park Street, and Wells Street.
And this is not, but this is also the Arlington District. And it would provide how many unit housing?
Two twenty-four units, three floors.
So three floors, so it's only gonna be three high?
Three floor high, yes.
Okay, three floors high?
Yeah.
Twenty-four units apiece?
Yes.
And one to two bedrooms?
Twelve one and twelve two.
Twelve one and twelve two, so it's not huge units where three and four bedrooms?
No, 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 no.
It's on the, I don't wanna say smaller side, but it is on the smaller side as far as units.
But it's a good size unit, it's a decent size because I used to own, I still own a garden-style building, twenty-four unit. Having a style with main hallway nice and, and storage area and, you know, and, uh, three floors.
Okay.
Rectangular, with nice facade to look, you know, to look newest in these years, and, and, you know, that's.
And so the, so what I'm looking at here is that this gray space is where you're gonna provide parking? Because in that area, there's no parking on there, if for a unit of that size, you couldn't park on the street? That's a very congested area.
We really try, we really try to work and, don't be greedy in the land and stuff, because I try without.
Yeah, you can fit more properties on there.
I try without a lot from the city, the lot is coming to the end, in the end, I really tried to work my project without touching, without the lot. Even I clean it and I protect with block, because that was one of the assets they have to, to put all the trash for years. And I really, I also, you know, I used to make a plan with the return, you go around.
So it looks like, I, I see that here.
Doesn't make sense.
You can come in on Wells and leave out of Park, or come into Park and get out at Wells, so that there is some relief as far as people trying to leave the facility.
It's a lot, it's a lot of good benefit with a lot, especially for the traffic, safety. You don't have a congestion anywhere, because you're not even, you're not even had to traffic it too much from West Street, you don't have to, you know, you have assets for different, you know, West Street is kinda, it's not a big street.
No, it's not.
All the streets, it's not a huge street, it's most, you know.
Well, thank you so much for elaborating on the project.
No problem.
So that way we can understand, because I know what's before us is just this parcel of land, but understanding the bigger picture and how it fits in is helpful to this body.
Thank you.
Sure, just to recap the discussion, we have a motion on the table to send it, to send this, this, this item, sixty-eight oh nine, to the full council with no recommendation. And this is a lot, a four thousand square feet lot, and it is a direct disposition. So there is a motion on the table, properly second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify on the motion, we send it to the full council with no recommendation, which means that everybody at the full council will, will have the opportunity to discuss the item. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is item one sixty-three oh nine. And this is the rescind prior disposition to twenty-seven Bennington Street. We have Liza here, again, Liza, talk to us about this property. Why do we want to rescind this prior disposition?
So, it's, it's really up to you guys whether you guys wanna rescind it or not. So, we voted back in September eighteen, two thousand twelve, almost five years ago, to sell, a yard sale to the abater. We've tried for, since I started working for the city, I've tried to contact the purchaser, we've sent them numerous letters with no response. I spoke to him last year, he said he would start saving money to purchase the lot, it's only for twenty-seven hundred dollars. The attorney has been sending, sending him letters, I sent, I included copies of the latest four letters. He finally came in this afternoon and, and hand-delivered a letter saying that he wants you guys to give him three to four weeks to be able to come up, for him to sell some stocks and purchase the property. But it's, it's been five years.
All right, Liza, so legally, what can we do about this property? Have you consulted with the attorney?
I, we've spoken with the attorney, we've, as I said, we've tried to work with him, given extension of time, and then he just doesn't show up. So if you see in this picture, the fenced area and where the vehicle is, this is, that's the city-owned lot that he's been using it since he purchases property.
So, that goes all the way to the back?
Yeah, so it, it's his backyard, it's part of his backyard, it's the driveway and where he has his vehicle parked. There's really not much more we can do than to sell it to him, we've just been waiting for five years. I mean, the other thing we can do is remove the fence and try to sell it to the abater, or just give him another three to four months.
Months or weeks?
Well, this is not about waiting, it's about the concept, if they purchase it and they're not paying for it, even though we not, we might don't sell it, we gotta take it back. Because this is not about just, or just because he's the only one that's gonna benefit from it, we're just gonna let it be, that's not the point. So legally, what we can do, we can, can we take it back?
We, we haven't done the closing, the city still owns it, so right now, he's used, he's encroaching on our property, he's parking in our property, we can go and, and tell him we're gonna remove his fence, or we can continue to just wait.
All right, so let me ask you a question. In terms of going up there, knowing already that we already have a contract with, for a possible purchase of this property? Is that giving them any right to be on the property?
No, absolutely not.
So, have you talked to the enforcement departments?
Not yet, when we met at the last real estate task force meeting last week, we talked about coming to the city council tonight, Housing Committee to rescind the vote. But then he, he sent the letter, so I haven't, because I just got the letter this afternoon, I haven't talked to the real estate task force again about whether we, we can give him more time.
All right, what the letter says?
It's right in there.
I mean, we, I don't know, it's, it's really, you guys voted to, to sell the property to him, and what we, what we have been doing is going back to all those votes to make sure that people have clothes on their property, and he just has not.
I think in, in, I think it would be, I know that we've been waiting a long time, but is it, it, it's a small piece of property. It may be more trouble than it's worth to forcefully take things down, put up Jersey barriers, a cost to us, probably more than the twenty-seven hundred dollars or, or whatever, um, it is at the moment. But if we are giving this last, this last ditch effort, uh, of grace, um, to, to the property owner, I think that we have the duty of care also to the city to see who else is interested.
Absolutely.
In the event that the three weeks, um, comes to an end, or four weeks comes, comes to an end, and he doesn't comply, because then at least we have, um, a better understanding of, of, of what we, what other options the city has.
Absolutely, and this is why we haven't moved on it, because there's really not much more that we can do with that property other than to sell it to him. Um, or the other abutter.
Or the other, I mean, right away, what I see here is that there's a triple-decker, and I'm sure that those people would love to have.
More parking.
More parking and green space, um, and Allevi Benning, Bennington Street is very congested. It's an extremely congested street. Um, and it would benefit, uh, many families, so that's more than one car, assuming that everybody, I, I'm just making an assumption that there's five cars here.
But just then imagine them fighting, it's.
That, I, I think those presumption, those presumptions are not for this body to, to even consider. I think that we have a responsibility to the city, I think five years is way over the time. Um, and I thank you so much for going over all of those votes, and, and I know that that's, as we're working together to say, hey, where are we with these things? I don't, in my personal opinion, um, I don't think it's out of our ability to wait another three or four weeks with the caveat that a letter is sent to adjacent, um, property owners that, is there an interest? There's a possibility that this property may be come available.
Yeah.
Um, and go, and go from there. That has nothing to do, this is not personal, this is business.
Yeah.
That's just my, my, my opinion on it.
Councillor.
Councillor, please.
Was Mr. Ramirez aware of tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And invited to attend? Is he here this evening?
No.
Did he, did you have a conversation with him? Do you know if you had intentions to show up this evening?
No, so he, because it's, it's sort of a legal matter, he's been communicating with Attorney Brian Corrigan, he hand-delivered this letter to him, I'm not sure whether they discussed, but the, the last letter that was sent to him clearly states that we were meeting tonight um, for a vote to rescind, um, to rescind the vote. If you can see that, the last letter sent to him last week said that we were meeting tonight at seven, and that, um, Attorney Corrigan anticipated that the housing committee would recommend, um, to rescind the vote, and that, um, it will be voted on Tuesday, May sixteenth. After he received this letter, he came in today and dropped off his letter saying that he's going to sell some stocks to buy the property, but he's not here.
So, a couple of things, one is, I, I do respect, and I'm glad that we do have City Attorney Brian Corrigan working for us. I, I shudder a little bit when I read that he, there was an anticipation clause inside there, and he was trying to forecast what we as a body could do. I don't know if anybody knows what, how the three of us are going to vote at any one time, or what the full council's going to do. But yet in an official letter, he took a stab at trying to predict the future and decide how we were going to vote, both here and at the full council. I just think that's the.
Yeah.
Potentially presumptuous and a little dangerous, because now you're, what happens, you set this person up to thinking this is what's going to happen, and we haven't had a chance to talk about it at this level. So anyway, uh, I, I probably need to have a little, just a little friendly conversation with him about that. Uh, that's one. Two, my, uh, I'm, I'm of the, of the opinion that, that we grant the potential purchaser some time. I am also of the opinion that we should put a sunset clause on that. In other words, we say that we will certainly, uh, will continue to keep this open for thirty days, whatever reasonable amount of time is. Um, and that if this closing does not take place, or he does not, um, take the necessary steps by the planning, uh, by your board, by me, by your department, uh, that we then withdraw or rescind automatically, which would, which would then, uh, speed up the process, you wouldn't need to come through here. So, I just, I, I'm trying to provide more, uh, leverage for you as a city agency to, um, to work with him. So give him a little bit of rope, and if he doesn't decide that he's going to do according to what's in the best interest of our city, we can't be just stringing along any further, then we say, okay. Uh, it's, the, the vote is now for revision, rescind, rescind, a rescission vote. So, uh, that would be my recommendation, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about it.
I think it's, I was thinking the same ten, um, I was thinking the same idea, we can, I was also thinking about sending, sending, uh, Mr. Ramirez. He'd, uh, actually a letter from this board, um, directly, saying, uh, what we're planning on doing. What do you feel about that, councillors? Together with the, with your, with the thought.
I have no, I, I have no objections, Mr. Chairman, to that, to that, uh, to that strategy.
Oh, and by the way, um, Liza, we have, we have three people that might be interested. Twenty-four, twenty-six at the Toga Street.
Oh, yeah.
That could be assets to Bennington. So. So yes, uh, I actually like the idea of what you expressed, and, uh, councillor, please, do you have any other?
Well, I, I, I don't know if we can rescind a vote via a sunset clause, meaning, because this has come before this body, we have to take a vote to rescind. If, so she still has to come back here. Like, I'm talking process-wise.
Process-wise, yes. I, I understand.
I don't mind coming back if.
We love having you.
I'd like to make a motion, and you can tell me what you think of it. So my motion would be to, to, uh, to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation to rescind the vote of providing the subject property to Carlos R. Ramirez, uh, with, uh, with the, uh, with the condition that if he were to respond affirmatively to the planning board, that the vote to rescind expires. It was removed. And I, I would throw it, I would be open to a date, thirty days after the vote of the full council, I'm not sure what is reasonable.
We can do thirty days.
Uh, the motion is to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation to rescind the vote, and at that level, we're actually going to open to discussion and decide what we're going to do at the full council, correct?
Well, I was also adding that clause in there so that the full council understands what the motion is.
Yes.
The intent of, my intent, I may or may not agree, my intent is to try to streamline this a little bit more by, um, by saying, okay, let's just, I want to get this document out of here. I want him to either buy the property or rescind the vote. And I don't want to have to go through the motions, have him either, you know, if he decides to just, to play around a little bit more, then have you come back here, then we got to do it, we take one vote here, one vote of the full council, then he's either going, at that point, the, the car, he's either going to purchase this thing in, of case we're done, or he's going to, he's just going to string along, and then the thirty days will expire, and then it's rescinded.
And by the way, um, uh, in terms of process, we have, anytime that we take up with the full council, uh, we have a, um, a thirty days to take effect.
That's right, so.
So, um, that could be a, a situation that we can, uh, actually.
And my motion, the motion that is before, if you accept it, the motion is, well, that puts a little bit of, that puts a little bit of, uh, pressure, right, on the, on the applicant. Hey, listen, this thing is being rescinded unless you take action. If you don't, if you decide that you don't take action, it's done. It's over, rather than we go through this little.
I agree with the motion, I mean, um, did he say second for the motion with discussion?
Second with discussion.
Sure, discussion, um, my councillor, please.
So in the event, you, you're presuming that we have possible interest in the subject property from Saratoga Street?
Or, yeah.
I just, we're just, yeah, we're just making assumptions, or next door. The last thing that I want is for us to be stuck with this property and not have other interests. Because the, the city, the, the intent is to, one, relieve the parking that's happening in that area, the congestion that's happening in that area, and to receive, uh, revenue for the taxes that are not being paid on this, on this property. Correct? And I don't know if, yes, I agree with, um, with councillor Plant that that would streamline, and thank you for that clarification as far as that when our votes take, it takes thirty days, so that, that is within our purview. But are we painting ourselves in a box? That's, that's my opinion, or question, or both. Because it's pretty definitive.
Councillor Plant, I'm sorry, you finished?
No, no, go ahead.
I don't, I, so, with, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, what I don't, I don't, uh, understand the conundrum, I don't understand the, the box that we would be placing. Either this guy's paying it or he's not paying it, it's very simple. And if he decides he's not paying it, we don't want to deal with him anyway, right? Let's stop stringing him along. And then, I have no idea if these other people want or don't want it, I have no idea, no idea. But, um, I think we should be tired of being strung along, it's been five years. It's been five long years, and, and these letters have been around for a while. And only at the last minute that he sent a letter to us saying, oh yeah, I need to sell stock or something, whatever the situation is.
And you know what, to go a little farther, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. To go a little farther, I think that we should actually tell this guy, look, five years ago, we have an agreement, and since then, we haven't get taxes on that property. So that's a relief.
We got nothing, right?
We got nothing, five years, and he, and he's been using it. And that's a reality. And this is a matter, it's not a matter of, of the property, it's a matter of the concept of the city of Lawrence doing business. And, um, we're not here to profit from, from there, from that. He is, he is actually using it, and he actually closes it and everything, and not paying for it. I mean, we understand, people go through different situations that, that could be a little bit of a challenge, but it's been five years.
And he's been ignoring letters and upon letters, so I really would alter, I agree with, um, councillor LaPlante's motion. I think the vote to rescind it would expedite him to, to do something about it. Um, because if we don't do anything, he's just going to keep ignoring us.
And the only point that I'm not aware of is what's the tipping point? What, what, what is action? Is action actually closing within thirty days? Is action, is there something, I mean, I don't know the process as well as you do, three, Mr. Chairman. What's the one point that you would, would say, yep, he's in? What's that, can you tell me what that would be?
The closing.
Closing, do you think we get closing within thirty days of a council vote?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, there is a motion on the table, properly second. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, all right, we have another item on the agenda tonight, we have, uh, this is number three. So, um, item nine A fifteen, disposition of, uh, Beckland and Manchester Street.
Yeah, this is, um, this is a forty-five hundred square feet lot, um, that we did a request for proposals. We got a total of four bids. Their group was the best proposal monetarily and, and proposal-wise. This is a property that we tried to do a yard sale to, uh, last year or the year before, um, for forty-five hundred dollars. Now we're, we decided to, um, that, um, to do a request for proposal, and our minimum bid on this was, um, forty thousand dollars, and we got a, a bid of seventy thousand dollars. The, um, pro, um, proposal is to build a multifamily duplex-style home consisting of three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms per unit with off-street parking, resulting in no, uh, additional impact to traffic on Beckland or Manchester Street. The applicant will sell the property after it's been built, and he will offer a five percent discount if it's a Lawrence resident on the sale price.
All right, um, so basically, we have three different bidders. This is the higher bidder, seventy thousand dollars for a, uh, a, uh, four thousand five hundred square feet lot. The zoning is, uh, three, which allow him to do a multifamily, um, multifamily, um, building there. Correct?
Yes, um, it's, it's, it's smaller than what it's required by five hundred square feet, but, um, so he will have to go to, get a variance on it. But we've discussed, we've talked about it, um, in the real estate task force, um, meetings, and, um, we definitely want something done in that lot. Because it's right on, it's a very busy street, um, it just looks awful right now.
This is right in front of Futeria.
That's what I was about to say, so it's that.
It's that lot.
I, I know exactly what.
A lot on the corner, not right in front of it.
Yeah, the corner of Manchester.
Right.
It's two different lots right there.
I drive through there every day.
Yeah.
That's really good.
And it's a really good bid.
Uh, councillors, there is, uh, there is any question for, uh, for this item?
Through you?
Sure.
Um, what's the parking plan?
They're going to have, um, four.
Is it in this packet?
Yes.
Did I miss it somewhere?
And, um, Kenny Dair is here, he can answer any of your.
I'm sorry?
Kenny Dair is here, he can ans, answer any of your questions, but he did include, um, plans.
I see the plans, but I, if it's not in color, I don't understand. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Dair?
Good evening, my name's, uh, Ken Deher, uh, from Deveru Bank, I'll be glad to ask, you know, answer any questions you have. Uh, this pocket for, uh, two cars per unit, uh, pocket on one side, they're both on different sides of the street. Uh, it's the old townhouse home to fit with the neighborhood. I think one thing Liza said, it, it's actually B-zone right now, I think she was a little, it's not, uh, R-three, it's B-one. B-one allows for right now, under zoning regulations, B-one allows for, under zoning regulations. Ten-foot offsets from front and side and rear. So it could accommodate right now anything from a forty-four, uh, twenty-six to twenty-eight wide home, which would, um, be retrospect to what would be two townhouses, uh, two townhomes side by side. The total, I don't have the plot plan in front of me, Mr. LaPlante, but I think it's eighty feet by, uh, fifty in that dimension, roughly in that dimensions. So if you, uh, you put the footprint in there with ten-foot offsets from the front and rear, you'll be sitting with a footprint roughly of somewhere around forty-five by, uh, thirty feet, which would accommodate, uh, two townhouse units, twenty-two by thirty feet, without zoning. And as we said, we're actually offering, and also, I know Mr. LaPlante has a lot of issues with, uh, units in the city. We're actually offering, in, in the last probably, uh, three to four years of the units I've built in the city, ninety-nine percent of them has gone to, uh, residents of the city, uh, that are renting, already renting in the city. This one, we're actually proposing to, uh, a Lawrence residence, a five percent discount of market value. So what we're trying to attract is, we try, always have attract, is residents of the city that already exist in the city, always rent, already renting the city to purchase property, you know, to purchase property for themselves as homeowners.
And so this is two, it's going to be a two-family home?
Two-family, side-by-side town.
Side-by, so townhouse.
But we, but we sell it as a duplex.
But you sell it as a duplex?
The reason why the owner-occupant has the rental opportunity to use that rental income to, to pay the mortgage.
Correct. So it's going to be side-by-side?
Correct.
And the parking is going to also be on the, on the, on the side of, of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, what's the duration of the project, let's say?
I, typically, when I, once I take ownership of the deed, it's a six-month period.
Six months.
From start to finish, and my history has shown that. Once I require, uh, acquisition of the property, I put it up and complete it within a six-month period. So I put, I put, I put, I put it back on the tax road within six months.
And so at this time, do you have any outstanding projects with the city?
Yes, I do.
And that would be?
Well, I've, I've numerous ones.
Just one or, one or two of your latest ones, so that way if I can.
Doyle, Greenwood, Hamilton, uh, last ones. I'm also doing projects on Park Street, I'm also doing projects on Woodland Court, uh, you know, I, I'm all over the city. I've, I've been here for many years. I, 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 my, I try to, uh, I've always. I've been here for many years. I, 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 my, I try to, uh, I've always, uh, put a project, when I put a project online, I complete it. I don't sit with it or, I, it is, I, I put it, on, once I close on it, and I've closed on many properties through the city. I bought quite a few properties off the city, which I think Mr. LaPlante's probably been on the longest here, and I usually, uh, I think he would know, once I, once I put a, once I close on a property, and I think Liza would, will, uh, agree with this, I usually have them completed within six months, seven, eight months, the longest, and I put them right back on the tax roads.
Well, I'm, I'm really excited that this is happening. Like I said, I, I drive by here every day. This is, I'm, I'm an unofficial bus driver, driving kids around. I drive right up that street all the time, and, uh, what I, what I see there is great opportunity to really build in that community, especially with all the work that we're putting in, um, to the Manchester Street Park, and, uh, thank you so much for.
I can assure you, once I, if I do, if the council does agree that I take ownership of the property, I will have it up and completed in six months for you.
In six months. I'm gonna hold you to it.
I'll think.
Counselor Blunt?
Great. No, uh, we had two developers here this evening, and I will testify to both of their, uh, good work, both Mr. Dair and also Mr. Nunez would do very good jobs in our city, and, um, uh, they, they both have very good reputations, and, um, uh, they have done our city well with their, uh, with their work ethic and their commitment. So that's, that's not in question at all. Uh, you may have heard my earlier comment, I think you did, which is why I think I heard a little bit more.
Excuse me?
I think you heard my earlier comment, um.
Yes, I did.
And so, through you, Mr. Chairman, and so, um, the reason why the first vote was for, from my, my perspective was, I needed to get more information on the zoning portion on Mr. Nunez's property on Park Street. Here, there is gonna be no need to go to the zoning board, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding is, is actually B-one zone, which has, with that, um, fifteen, twenty-five, per unit, yes.
I was picking the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, they, they shouldn't be any, no, there's no need for zoning. This is already a pre, you know, it's a, it's owned per, uh, per the city's requirements.
Was there, uh, was there any building on this property prior to?
I don't know.
There is two buildings there a long, long time ago. We've owned this property for twelve years. Those two buildings burned down. Um, this title is very complicated, so it took a long time for the city to foreclose on the tax lien, but it was a, a very old tax lien, um, and we've owned it for twelve years, and we started the process, I think it was in the early nineties, with the tax lien foreclosure.
So, I, I, you, you, you may hear from my voice that I'm still struggling a little bit with, with what I think is the right thing to do, and, um, and so, the, the, what I think I've decided to do is when, when there needs to be something to go before the zoning board, and the zoning board needs to go ahead and provide some sort of waivers or permits or whatever, I think that's when I start to get a little concerned about things. That means we're, we're going beyond the scope of what the city planned originally. That's why there's a special, uh, a waiver and, and a special permit. Um, I'm still struggling with Mr. Nunez's property. Well, again, I'll think about that some more, I'm open-minded to it, so I haven't, I've gotta work this out in my head a little bit about the direction. It's an awful lot of units, and we're not, this is not a debate on that one, but I, I, I come back to this one. I just want people to, to know that I'm looking at things as, as fairly as I can through the, the inequitable prism. Um, I am really concerned, I read the newspapers, I talk to the mayor, we know there's a lot of money being requested on the budget for schools, we know that we're spending a lot of money for that, we know that we've got an uptick, and it's been going on for a number of years now, uh, and that, and that concerns me, and it concerns me that, that, and it concerns me when I drive on the streets, and I just, it concerns me that do we have enough resources for the police and fire and everything else? It concerns me, it takes a long time to get from one point to another point in the city. The traffic is horrendous. Um, and I'm tired of getting the phone calls. I, I love hearing from my constituents, but it concerns me when I hear complaints about parking, and I can't get parking, and I can't do that. This is not in my district, um, but I totally understand. If you got a lot of units being put together, you got two units here, um, there's gonna be at least two cars, maybe more. That's the reality of two thousand seventeen, everybody's got a car, everybody's got a car. Um, and this wasn't like that a hundred years ago. There weren't many cars, and so we could have more people, because there weren't as many cars, and then there was less, a lot of this congestion. So I'm, I'm struggling. Um, but I think where I'm, I'm falling on this, the more I think about it, is I'm going to go with our city planners. Our city planners have for a purpose the way that we're going to be dealing with things as far as, um, the placement of properties. If this is a B-one district, and by right you do have this, um, even though those concerns remain viable to me, um, you're not going to the zoning board of appeals, and you're by right able to do this. Um, if, so I'm probably gonna sup, I'm probably gonna support this, and, and I'm, I'm strongly considering the other one as well. I need to think that through a little bit more. Depends on the answer on the zoning. Anyway, it's a long way to get from me thinking out loud. Thanks for your patience.
No problem.
So. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send it up with a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Second.
All right, discussion. I would like to open the floor for discussion, and we'll take the floor. I just wanna congratulate, um, you for thinking ahead of time, uh, thinking ahead of, uh, what some of the councilors concern, and, um, and, yes, um, that idea of having a re, a resident of the City of Lawrence purchasing that, that property, uh, it's great, because I mean, in that way, we, uh, reduce the effect that one of, uh, one of the councilor has, and, and, and consider, considering that, that's, that's a great way of thinking, uh, thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Uh, councilor, there is any other discussion? Are we gonna call the questions? Um, there is a, um, there is a motion already second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, items, uh, now, continuing with the agenda, we have, um, a surplus declaration, item one seventy seventeen, a surplus declaration for one seven, one seventy-five, one seventy-seven, uh, Newbury Street. Uh, Liza, can you go through a little bit more, please, about these properties?
This is a very small parcel, one thousand seven hundred forty-two square feet. Um, it's been sitting on for a while, um, as well, and I'm just here to declare a surplus we can offer to the abbotters for parking and green space.
Make a, make a motion, make a motion that we declare surplus, send the full council to declare surplus.
There is a motion on the table?
Second.
Uh, do, do you want to open for discussion?
I don't have any discussion, a surplus, I'm, I'm good.
Uh, surplus. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, the second property for a surplus as well is five Bruce Street, and the item is one seventy, one seventeen. All right, can you please, um, go through about the history of this, that, and so forth, so on?
This one's a little bigger. This is five thousand sixty square feet. Um, declaring a surplus, 'cause there is an interest from, in a abbottary to purchase part of this. Um, so I'm, we just did the survey, um, and it's just a surplus declaration.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion that we send it up with a favorable recommendation to declare a surplus.
There is a second?
Second discussion.
Discussion. Counselor Ortiz?
So this one is bigger, it's assessed, what's the plan? 'Cause it's right.
Yeah.
At the Spigot River, and that's.
Mm-hmm.
Flood zone, right?
Yeah, so the abbottary at Seventh Bruce Street has been using part of this for parking and, and.
I see cars there.
So, um, the idea is to, to sell it with an easement to the city for, um, bridge repairs, and in case we need to do anything in that line. So the, the idea is to, to sell it, but we will retain a, a, an easement in case we need to do something with the bridge.
So, right now, we're.
We just declared, sorry.
We're declare, we're declaring a surplus to eventually dispose of it?
To eventually dispose of it with.
Of part of it with an easement that benefits?
The benefits to the city in case there needs to be any bridge repairs, um, in case, uh, because of.
It benefits that community as well, too.
Yes.
Because I know that, that water can be a problem.
Mm-hmm.
On, on occasion.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, any other discussion?
Thank you, have a good night.
There is a motion.
I already made a motion.
And I second.
All right, the all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselor, there is any other, there is any other, um, any other item?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
We got places to be.